Item number one was our call to order. Item two is our pledge of allegiance. Can I please have that led by Mr. Flynn? All right, thank you very much. Item three is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. If there are any such comments, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. I see none, so we will move on to item four, which is comments by the Borough Council and the mayor. We'll start with Mr. McCoy.
Good evening, everyone. Just two congratulations in order. One to Nick for his graduation. Congratulations, and I don't think Will Williams is here, but we're getting his Millennial Superstar Award as Sustainability Director tomorrow evening. So that's great news, so congratulations to both of you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Vaccaro.
I just want to say I'm looking forward to a wonderful summer in Westchester, and thank you to all of the police officers working here tonight and throughout this summer. I know that we're going to be safe and have a very enjoyable season. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, thank you. I just want to remind everyone, we have Porch Fest this Saturday, March 20th, and the third ward, which is my ward, so come on down. It's one to seven. It's a good time for family, friends, and a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Flynn.
Greetings from the sixth ward, the sweetest ward in the borough. I have three things to share with you from the sweetest ward in the borough. Election Day was yesterday, and it was a wonderful day. It was probably one of the nicest days I ever spent at a polling place. The weather was perfect, and everybody's attitude was excellent. And we were gifted by an epicureal delight for lunch and dinner by our Constable Everett Butcher. He went out and purchased a brand-new Blackstone grill and provided lunch to everyone that came to the polling place, and he also provided dinner. And these weren't just little tidbits. They were almost full-course meals that Mr. Everett put together for everybody coming to the Presbyterian church, and I wanted to give him a nice shout-out. He spent a lot of time doing it. Last night, we had a very exciting town hall meeting. We will be gifted, again, one of $75 million project on the 300 block of West Market Street. The announcement was made last night by Eli Khan. He plans on putting in 163 apartments directly across the street from 313 West Market Street, which is the Government Services Building. Two swimming pools, 163 apartments, underground parking, and I asked whether I could have a membership to the swim club, because I'm always looking for something for free, and he said I had to be a resident inside the building, so that got turned down. And then I have really a major announcement. The Sixth Ward now is gifted with an extremely prominent person living in the Sixth Ward, and we haven't seen him lately because he's been away doing some projects. But now Kyle Hudson now lives in the Sixth Ward. He's one of our favorite people to come to our meetings and tries to take care of the underserved people in the borough at all times. And he said his podcast will be up soon, so I'm looking forward to seeing Kyle Hudson back at our meetings and walking the streets of the Sixth Ward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you. I'll keep it short. Did want to thank everyone for coming out to vote. It was great seeing everybody. I got to spend a good amount of time here when I got off work. It's always a good time. And then I did also want to encourage everyone to come out to Porch Fest. It's exciting to see this cool event gain so much traction, and I do appreciate all the work that's been done to put that together. So please come on out, enjoy, and I hope the weather's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor DeBattiste.
Thank you. Three things as well. I echo Council sentiment. Thank you. We're looking forward to Porch Fest this Saturday from one to seven. The Westchester Green Team has worked hard, and the neighbors of the ward have worked hard to put on Porch Fest. In addition, we have a lot of superstars in Westchester and onboard here, including Will, as you mentioned, but including also Mr. Gore, because this is Building and Safety Month, and he has been honored along with our police officers. This is National Police Week, and our police officers are here, so it's very fitting that they're here today because they have garnered awards for their service to the community as well. So we have a lot of rising stars in our community, so thank you one and all.
Thank you. I just have a few things. First, I am very pleased with how Gay Street has turned out with the closing of Gay Street. I was up there the first night it was open, and it was just fabulous. The town was packed, vibrant, and I just encourage everybody, if you haven't been up there, to go up in town, spend some money at our local businesses, and enjoy it. I want to also, Porch Fest is coming up this weekend, so please come. I know there was a really awesome article, picture, I got made the front cover of the Daily Local. I will not be playing though, although you might think that from that, I was not invited this year, but I will be there watching, really awesome musicians, so please come out to that. And then, congrats to everybody who won elections yesterday, and thank you for everybody who voted. The people that work in the Fourth Ward are the best at the election place. I love seeing them. And I also want to give a shout-out to some of those same people like Woody and Linda who have taken a lot of time in Greenfield Park, and they volunteer their time, and I think they do it without everybody knowing that those two spend time planting along the creek, the Goose Creek there, to help with the mitigation, and they just do that just because they want to, which is absolutely incredible, and it's very, very appreciative. I want to make sure I put that on the record that I'm very thankful for that. That's in addition to all the stuff that we're about to add to the rainstorm mitigation there, which I'm very excited about as well. So, all right, thank you. We're moving on to item five, presentation of Westchester Borough Police Department Awards by Chief Morehead.
Thank you. If I could have Lieutenant Lee and Deegan and also Mayor DeBattiste join me down on the floor, and if I could first have Officer Andrew Hill. Thank you, Council, for letting us take some time this evening. Important evening to recognize our officers. This is our spring recognition awards, and we'll be doing this again in the fall, so I appreciate your time, and I'll be as quick as I can. There are two other officers along with Officer Hill this evening, receiving a supervisory letter of commendation. Officer Robert M. Keen, who is unfortunately working tonight and cannot be here, and Officer Torres, who is away on family vacation. So I'll cover them in here. This is a two-part. On November 13th, 2022, at 18:22 hours, Officer Robert Keen and his partner Luis Lopez Torres were alerted to suspicious person near the Giant Food Market in East Bradford Township. The subjects were said to be pushing a shopping cart full of merchandise and behaving suspiciously. The officers located the subjects near the Walgreens store with the shopping cart full of various sightings, items, including video games, clothing, batteries, perfume, personal hygiene items, et cetera. As a result of exhaustive investigation, over $1,200 in stolen merchandise was recovered. All property was returned to the Walgreens and the Giant Food Market that were affected, and Officer Keen and Torres did an outstanding job in this investigation, and they will receive their commendation letters when they get back. Officer Hill, along with Officer Torres, a little over a week later at 12:37 PM, same type of call came in, and the officers, as a result of the investigation, detained individuals and a car, and the car was impounded for investigation. The officers worked through the case. They applied for a search warrant, which was granted, and the search warrant was served on that vehicle. Inside of the car was $8,400 worth of stolen merchandise, including over-the-counter medications, as well as additional items in the car were illegal narcotics and drug paraphernalia. The subjects were subsequently arrested. I hereby commend Officer Robert M. Keen, Officer Torres, and Officer Hill for their personal commitment and exceptional service that reflects positively on the Westchester Police Department and are in keeping with the highest standards and traditions of our agency. Congratulations. Now, if I could have the members of Squad Five. This is a large group that was working on the evening of January 22nd of this year, 2023. Let everybody get up here. With us this evening is pretty much all of Squad Five. Communications Officer Paul Widmire, Communications Officer Chad Cook, and Squad One Officers Adriana Ziders and Ross Blue. On January 22nd of this year, Officer McMillan, while on patrol at High and Market Street at approximately 2:15 in the morning, hears a disturbance just north of his location on High Street in front of the historic courthouse. He can see two groups arguing and views a male punching another male. Within seconds, Officer McMillan turns his police vehicle onto North High Street to intercept the two groups that look like they were starting a fight when he hears a single gunshot. Officer McMillan reports the gunshot and sees a group fleeing north on High Street towards Gay Street. Officer McMillan by himself stopped this group and started to pat them down for weapons when other officers began to arrive on location. While patting down individuals for weapons, one of the males indicated that he had been shot. They were able to provide a description of the shooter, and that description went out to the other officers. Officer Davis, who was right around the corner, recognizes the signs and symptoms of the shot individual to be life-threatening, and without delay places him in the rear of his patrol car and rushes him to Chester County Hospital, and I'll talk about that in another minute. Officer Winter and Officer Caraballo, while searching the area for the described shooter, locate him. As they're asking him to place his hands above his head, he reaches into his pocket. Officer Winter orders the male to take his hand out of his pocket, which thankfully he complied. Officer Winter and Caraballo then began to check the subject for weapons, and they find a loaded handgun in that pocket where his hand was. They recovered the weapon, arrested the individual, and detained him. Corporal Gallo was the supervisor in charge that night of the incident, and he provided leadership throughout the incident in the communication center on this night where Paul Widmire and Chad Cook. Without their help, the officers wouldn't have gotten the descriptions they got and the speed of Chester County Hospital being alerted of such a critical patient coming into them. Officer Blue, always finds something to do. Officer Blue began talking to all the witnesses and gathering all the pertinent witness information while on the scene. This entire group in front of you this evening worked as a team, and as a result, they arrested the person responsible for shooting, a 21-year-old male. That 21-year-old male is going to survive this incident. I'll give a brief report on him in a second, and this is the epitome of teamwork. Job well done to everyone. Thank you. Before we hand out certificates and medals, I'll finish up the part of this award for this group with talking about Officer Davis and his training and experience that told him that the individual was bleeding internally. A situation like this is a dire situation, and the subject needed to be to emergency surgery immediately. Officer Davis, without hesitation, patted the subject down for weapons, placed him in the rear of his patrol car, and drove him with lights and sirens to Chester County Hospital Emergency Room, which is not a trauma center, and our officers typically wouldn't take trauma patients to this hospital, but something told Officer Davis to go there. Within minutes of arriving at the emergency room, the subject went into cardiac arrest. Throughout the valiant efforts of doctors and nurses at both Chester County Hospital and later the subject was transferred to Penn Presbyterian in Philadelphia, where he underwent multiple surgeries and multiple months of recovery, the 21-year-old male would survive. I'm happy to report he's currently at home, receiving in-home care, and he's doing well. The officer's prompt response and recognition and application of lifesaving measures led to the victim's expeditious rescue and treatment when time was extremely critical. The surgeon and nurse team from Penn Presbyterian came down to visit Squad Five on a night briefing when I came in as well, and they just wanted to remind all the officers present that evening that if not taken directly to the doorstep of Chester County, this subject would not have survived. So job well done to Officer Davis. I'm commending him with a lifesaving award. Thank you for your service. Appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. And if I could now have Officer Graham step forward. You're good, guys. Thank you. Next is Commendation Medal for Exceptional Duty, presented to Officer Nicholas Graham for demonstrating an exceptional achievement in assigned duties with loyalty and dedication over a prolonged period of time. On behalf of the Westchester Police Department and the communities we serve, I hereby commend you for your professionalism and commitment that you exhibited on February 24th of this year. On that date, at approximately 12:07 hours, Officer Graham responded to Mabel's Barbecue at 607 East Market Street to investigate a burglary. After taking the initial report, Officer Graham contacted several businesses in the area where he was able to obtain incident-related video recordings. Over several days, Officer Graham reviewed hours of video footage that were useful in determining the exact timeframe of the burglary. Once the exact timeframe of the burglary was clarified, the officer was able to retrieve and review several residential video cameras. Officer Graham was able to track the path of the offender directly to his apartment. Officer Graham developed a suspect, approached the subject on East Minor Street in an apartment, and while following procedures, Officer Graham was able to locate the stolen property and extract a confession from the suspect. All of the stolen property was returned to the victim at Mabel's Barbecue. The officer's patience and skill, allowing him to investigate and apprehend the suspect, leading to a return of all the victim's property, I hereby commend Officer Nicholas Graham for his personal commitment and exceptional service that reflects positively on the Westchester Police Department and are in keeping of the highest standards and traditions of our agency. Congratulations. Okay, we have one more. Lieutenant Deegan, please step forward. He's the only one here tonight that didn't know he was getting an award, but this award's special.
Mr. Hickon?
I am. This evening, Lieutenant Martin J. Deegan is achieving the Chief's Achievement Medal. On behalf of the Westchester Police Department and communities we serve, I hereby commend you for your professionalism and commitment you have exhibited during your past 35 years with the Westchester Borough Police Department and the citizens of Westchester and East Bradford. On July 18th of 1988, yes, just about the end of 35 years, will begin 36 years of service, beginning in July. Martin James Deegan was sworn in as a police officer with the Westchester Police Department, badge number 93. Officer Deegan served in patrol, narcotics, and criminal divisions before being promoted to the rank of corporal in February of 1997. Corporal Deegan learned his role in supervision and leadership and was promoted to the rank of sergeant in March of 2000. As a sergeant of Squad Four and later Squad Three, I think I have that right, thanks to Josh's help, Sergeant Deegan quickly became the sergeant you wanted to work for and the leader you wanted to be like. He was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in February of 2017. Lieutenant Deegan consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty, setting a high standard that all officers should follow. In January of 2020, he was appointed to acting chief and certainly possesses all of the attributes to lead this great department. Today, he is in the administrative lieutenant role, handling a multitude of daily tasks and on-call rotation. He really dislikes right-to-know and dealing with all the body cameras, but he does this job every day. When this is combined with this positive attitude and personal commitment to excellence, it is clear that he is the type of officer and administrator that epitomizes what is good about this profession. Congratulations, Marty, on completing 35 years of service and receiving this honor. Congratulations. Counsel, there. Thank you very much for letting us take some time this evening.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on. I was just waiting until everybody kind of filtered out of here. We're going to move on to item six, which is proclamation. Oh, sorry, I took a piece of chocolate before. Proclamation declare May 2023 is Building Safety Month, and that's by Mayor DeBattiste.
Yes, you know, Mr. Gore informed us that this was Building Safety Month, not only here, but nationally as well. And so to that end, we were one of just a few who offered a proclamation for Building Safety Month, and please come up, Mr. Gore, because he diligently goes to properties and inspects. I can say that from personal experience. I can tell you that. But I just wanted to read just a little snippet, because the Westchester Borough is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians like Mr. Gore. Building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of building. And for that, we are pleased to recognize Mr. Gore for Building Safety Month and all that he does every day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And so that's just me. I have a great team of individuals who work in our department. You know, they work hard every day going out ensuring the buildings are safe, and just want to thank Borough Council for their continued commitment to building safety. You know, without the adoption of building codes, we wouldn't be the community we are today, building a resilient community and ensuring that our residents are safe. So thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move on to our, no, item seven, which is our discussion items. We have two versus seven A. Direct the Borough Manager to make application to PennDOT to install a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Price and Brandywine Streets. This one specifically, I asked to be on the discussion, and, you know, I have a couple of reasons, but I was wondering if, Ms. Vaccaro, I don't want to put you in a spot, but would you be able to give us just a little background to where this came from and maybe some findings, maybe the police department found in the study, or just some reasoning for the stop sign in the first place?
When I took office, I had residents who live on the 400 and 500 block of Price come to me with concerns about the traffic on Price Street. And in sort of quickly looking around, it was decided to go after adding a stop sign, based primarily on the fact that Minor Street had stop signs added relatively recently. It took me some time and a lot of work, but we met with the police and the mayor, and Mr. Flynn helped me understand more about the process he went through to get the stop signs on Minor Street, at which point I started working more with the Borough Engineers and PennDOT. At that point, the avenue was sort of spelled out pretty clearly that in order to get a stop sign there, we would have to pass warrants set by PennDOT to make that possible, and the engineers were the path to make that possible. The police were not in favor of this stop sign. The engineers found one possible warrant. It's not horribly clear path, but it is a possible path. I should share that the engineers did bring up the fact that if we bring this to PennDOT, there is always the chance that PennDOT will increase the speed limit in response to our request rather than adding a stop sign.
Wow, okay, I didn't.
Yeah, so that's where we are. The rest of the neighborhood on the 300, 400, and 500 block have expressed concern for moving forward with traffic calming strategies. The stop sign is not an available traffic calming strategy according to PennDOT.
Okay, thank you.
That's the background.
I appreciate that. Thanks so much. Put you on the spot there to kind of give us that. So, yeah, in my opinion, I know that these kind of, these type of things come up where there's a perception of speeding, there's a perception of something, and then when the police department does their study, they go, I know it might seem that way, but these are the, here's the numbers that we found. And I feel like more often than not, that doesn't always help with the residents. They still say, oh, okay, I appreciate this, but still bad, right? And that kind of, that happens. So for me, I'm going to trust the numbers, and I just, I don't always think adding extra stop signs in the town is necessary. I feel like we start adding them, and adding them, and adding them, and then before you know it, every single block you hit in the borough have to get stop at, stop, 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 and it's just, I don't see it being beneficial to traffic flow. and it's just, I don't, I don't see it being beneficial to traffic flow, and personally, I don't see the main issue down there. So, for that reason, I'm opposed to this, but obviously I'm one vote. So, count, any other comments from anybody in council?
One question, because I didn't hear the whole session. The PennDOT's potential response to increase the speed, what, I don't understand.
So, the Engineers are Engineers, and I appreciate the clarity in sort of how they work. I don't know that the neighbors appreciate the clarity in how they work. The Engineers did, looked at multiple angles and sort of possible outcomes, and I was warned more than once that if we brought this to PennDOT, PennDOT had the right to increase, to look at the study, see that there actually is a certain degree of speeding already on this street, and rather than asking the police to enforce it, they could potentially increase the speed limit on Price Street.
There were two other things in their study that came up, and I'm not sure if this, what the process is, but one of them was to put opposing, traffic does not have a stop sign at the Brandywine Street intersections?
Yes.
And is that something that can happen relatively soon? And then, number two, I know, Chief, we'd talked about the, the speed, speed sign going up at some point. Has that happened at all, or has that made any difference?
Yes, so I was in touch with Patty Stanton, who lives at Price and Brandywine, and is kind of the chief complainant on the current traffic issue on Price Street. The new state-of-the-art speed sign was received about a month ago. Our officers had to get trained in it. It had to be lettered, and it just came back two days ago. It's outback being charged, and I'm happy to report it goes on Price Street beginning Friday morning.
Great news. Thank you.
Yeah, that's interesting. It's a good question. Thank you, Mr. McCoy, because I know that that is often a response that we make when we think there's speeding going on, and that does work. That speeding sign absolutely does. It works just personally for me. If I'm just driving, I'm like second-guessing myself, oh, my God, am I speeding? And I slow down when I see that. So, I think those are other things that we can do to control the speeding as opposed to just throwing a stop sign everywhere that somebody thinks we need a stop sign. So, I don't want it to belittle people's perceptions, but that's just my take.
If I could just say one final thing, because I totally understand where the neighbors are coming from, but being an engineer and having read the report, you know, there are multiple warrants that have to be, you know, you have to achieve them, or you'll have to show that they exist, and they don't. And one small possible avenue, hearing that PennDOT could come back and increase it makes me even more concerned, and I think probably the prudent thing probably would be to, you know, put the opposing traffic does not have stops at the Brandywine intersections, you know, as soon as we can. I don't know what that process is, and to continue using the speed enforcement sign as a next step rather than taking the chance that PennDOT could, could increase the speed.
Yep. Mr. Flynn?
Add some color to, well, they got it over on Minor Street. Why can't we get it? Well, when I started working on the project on Minor Street, Mr. Stefano, it's almost like he reread his entire note to me, because he said, I can go down Minor Street and get from one side of town to the other side of town without stopping. And it's pretty, it's amazing how you remember that, huh? So, with that being said, the first stop sign was put at Darlington, because there are a lot of places that the cars would prematurely stop thinking that they're seeing the children from the bucket school, and some rear ends continued to happen, although there was not a stop sign there. People were stopping. So, they were able to, traffic planning and development, I think they're called, was able to accumulate a bunch of pertinent information for PennDOT. The next sign was on New Street, and if you go to New Street, you'll actually see a bright fluorescent yellow-green sign on New Street that said opposing traffic doesn't have to stop, because it was almost an accident every day there, because people were flying down from church, going over Darlington, and flying down over New, and then the New people couldn't see them at the dentist office and pull out. There were a lot of accidents there. So, those two stop signs actually met the warrant, the warrants that needed to be handled, and it didn't happen overnight. It took close to three years to get all that stuff done, and surprisingly enough, you know, they did work, and they're constantly working, and there's hardly any accidents anymore at New Street, which was the big impact section. So, those were warranted by documentation from PennDOT, and they're not always the easiest people to deal with. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I agree. It is a different situation. So, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I'm not just opposed to, just because I don't live on Price Street. My, I live in the corner of Franklin and Rosedale, and if you're coming east, there's no stop sign going around that little curve. And my wife, my own wife, has said, can we just, can we talk about getting a stop sign there? And I just, no, 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 no. So, I promise, even though I'm right outside my house, I don't, I don't want an extra one. So, that's my take. Any other comments? Any public comment? Coming up, okay. 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 That being said, if anybody wishes to make a motion on this, then... How long do I wait, Mr. Metrick? Okay. Well, I don't hear any motions, so what do we do? Do we just move on? There's nothing to vote on. Okay. I can, but I won't. So, oh, I can't. Yeah, I can. All right. All right. Hearing no motions from council, we're going to move on. So, no action will be taken on 7A. 7B is authorized to solicitor to prepare an ordinance to vacate a portion of Prescott Alley from parcel 1-8-230.1, east to North Darlington Street. This was put on discussion by Mr. Flynn, or by me, because Mr. Flynn is going, he feels he has a conflict, and he can't vote without the conflict, so he will be abstaining from this. Correct? Yes. So, is there any further comment from council on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance to vacate a portion of Prescott Alley from parcel 1-8-230.1, east of North Darlington Street.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded, made and seconded to authorize Item 7B as presented. I didn't allow public comment, but I'd like to make sure I allow that. Public comment? Okay. If there's no other discussion, Mr. Metrick, would you call the question?
Ms. Vicaro, Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey's absent, and Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. We're moving, wait, oh, five zero. I'm sorry. Yes, five zero with one abstention. Thank you. Thank you for that. Moving on to Item Eight, which is our consent agenda. Any comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Stefano, I'd like to make a motion. Do we accept the consent agenda as it's presented?
I would like to second that.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded to present, accept our consent agenda as presented. Any public comment on that? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Metrick, could you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey is absent. Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Moving on to Item Nine, which is other business. I have one item. I'm just making an announcement that after our adjournment this evening, we're not gonna re-adjourn. After council adjourns, we are going to meet an executive session to discuss a personnel policy. Any other business? I do not keep track of that, so thank you, Mr. Flynn. Any other business tonight? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thanks so much.